Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to our January 13th governmental complex county council meeting. I want to make sure that the people in the overflow room can hear us. So if you can't hear us, just someone come forward and maybe we can adjust the volume. Thank you, everyone, for coming. As you all know, that water and sewage is an important issue. We have listened to everyone and we have a great presentation for you all. I hope you do have questions. I hope we have answers as well. So further a doubt, I'll go ahead and call this meeting in order. First, we have the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
No move.
It's been moved improperly. Second, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Now down to invocation, Councilmember Bell.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we just come to say thank you for your blessings. Thank you for this time that we come together here tonight. Father, we pray that you bless this meeting, give us wisdom as we make decisions as it relates to the community and the needs of this council and the county. God, we just ask your blessing. Again, we ask for wisdom, God. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Bell. Now down to your approval of minutes dating December 9th and December 18th. Do y'all have a motion?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved improperly. Second, any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor? Any opposed? As have it. No public presentations. Now down to our first public comment session. Ms. Davis, anyone sign to speak?
We have 10 who wish to speak tonight. First, Mr. Don Quick, speaking on ordinance 738, wastewater.
Council Chairman and council members, my name is Don Quick. I'm from the Center Creek community and I'm here to talk about two things, ordinance 738 and the wastewater plant. First of all, I was asked to hand this to Ms. Davis. It is an online petition against the water treatment plant, the wastewater plant, signed by over 1,000 people. Not all of them are Fairfield County residents, but the count is still growing. It's rapidly growing. If you check it tonight or tomorrow morning, it'd be over 1,200, 1,300. You need to be aware of that. Anyway, on ordinance 738, I'm upset with the council about ordinance 738. We have a third reading tonight and this, about 10, 12 days ago, is the first I knew that ordinance 738 had anything to do with the southern part of Fairfield County. It's not listed in the minutes, it's not listed in the ordinance, and there's been no public information about where ordinance 738 applies. And I just wish ethically and morally that was some way you guys could get the information out so that the people that are affected would know this. Secondly, we have the proposed wastewater treatment plan. And again, same issue. This has been kind of hidden. We knew wastewater was subject, but nobody ever said possibly southern Fairfield County. I think it should have been publicized so that we could have a public hearing and publicly discuss it. The big issue that I find personally is the stigma attached to, quote, "a wastewater treatment plant." You go to any realtor and they tell you, oh, there's a wastewater plant over there. What are you going to do? Well, has he got anything else over here, over there? Wastewater treatment plant, sewage treatment plants. People don't want to be near them for a variety of reasons, whether it's noise, traffic, odors, whatever. But the point is, there is a stigma that affects property taxes and property growth. For those of you who don't know, a Fairfield, a former Fairfield County Council member told me Center Creek community is the fastest-growing area in the county. I don't know if that's still true, but we've had five houses in the last two years built in our neighborhood. So I know it's still growing. But I've also had two houses in our neighborhood put up for sale since you announced the wastewater plant. So it scares me what's going to happen to the rest of the southern Fairfield County. One last thing, are we putting the cart before the horse? Remember when, well, most of you weren't here, but the former council wanted to borrow some money against the new tax revenue coming from the two nuclear plants? How much did we borrow? Millions. How much in interest are we paying on that money? We're still paying it, aren't we? Nobody's ever told me it's paid off. So here we are, talking about spending millions more.
Thank you.
And we don't have anywhere to go with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. David Valentine, speaking on ordinance 738, wastewater.
Mr. Chairman, council members, good evening. My name's David Valentine. I'm a Center Creek resident and I'm here to discuss the wastewater proposal and the wastewater plant. I'm also a vice president of engineering for a large international company with extensive automotive and airport knowledge, dealing with wastewater management. And my complaint to the council is, after hearing about ordinance 738, is it's not doing the right thing. You're managing with antiquated water proposals. Dumping 4 million gallons a day into the local community's rivers is not the right thing to do. The modern proposal is, as we drive towards cleaner environment, water technology has moved significantly onward. Automotive plants, most of them have water processes in every single part of manufacturing, of which you get chemicals coming out, chromium, metals, phosphates, hydrofluoric acids, ammonia, paint residues, hydrocarbons, which are incredibly difficult to manage out of wastewater into the wastewater system. It can pollute the system easily. Modern-day technology drives for a zero liquid discharge proposal. In other words, onsite, on the OEM, holding ponds, creating a better environment for the local community and also for the OEM manufacturer themselves. Industries and government agencies spanning from Europe, North America, China, and India, the biggest industrial water users on the planet, are quickly turning to ZLD, sorry, ZLD systems, excuse my language, I'm not from around here, okay? To recover the liquid from wastewater effluent, they can then use, the end user, the end-use result is clean water that can be reused in the plant, not pumped into the local environment. But also, it produces a dry chemical residue, which is the waste. Using this, you use membrane separation, including microfiltration, ultrafiltration, nanofiltration, and reverse osmosis using bioreactors, oxidization, and clarification. Most OEMs use these zero liquid discharges these days, okay? Using reverse osmosis, industrial wastewater treatments purify water, which is safe to release back into the environment or to reuse within the plant's processes themselves, okay? In conclusion, then, I would suggest the council use the $300,000 they have earmarked for this plant to actually consult with the OEMs and actually put that money and also the construction funds, et cetera, for the pipeline and everything else to an onsite, lined-holding pond with a ZLD solution.
Thank you.
If we could, to keep things matters moving, could we hold the applause and hold our reactions, please? Thank you.
Next, Ms. Shirley Green, speaking on Mount Zion.
Good evening, council. Shirley Green, District 2. Is transparency asking too much? Tonight, we have the second reading of ordinance 740, authorizing amendments for the, to a lease agreement, providing for a new county administration building to better serve the citizens of Fairfield County and other related matters. As we hear about the development of the teachage at Mount Zion and the donation of the teachage at no cost to the county, this ordinance is questionable at best. As stated by Fairfield County representatives and county manager, First and Main will refurbish the teachage and give it to Fairfield County at no cost. Where is the catch? Is there a legal issue here? In the option agreement dated October 8th, 2018, the option agreement by and between Fairfield Facilities Corporation option holder and Mount Zion Holding owner stated the following: "It is understood and agreed that owner shall retain ownership of the teachage, as such building is commonly known and property surrounding it in such amounts as may be reasonably required for minimum lot size purposes. For zoning and development requirements, retained property, the option holder and owner hereby agrees that owner may transfer the premises and retained property to Mount Zion master tenant." Would that be Mount Zion Society? Is there transparency in this process? Unless Exhibit A to this option agreement was changed, Mount Zion Holding retained ownership of the teachage from the beginning. Will we pay for the refurbishment costs in some other line item? Are we really getting something for nothing? Or will this property revert to the Mount Zion Society when refurbished? Yes, residents, Fairfield County Council and the Fairfield County Manager owes us an explanation. Sorry, citizens of Fairfield County, I think we're being duped again. Stay woke. I support, I support the neighbors of Syrup Mill Road in opposition to the purchase of 50 acres to be used for a wastewater treatment site. Don't dump in Kurt Thurston's backyard.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Sean Goff, speaking on wastewater.
Good evening, Chairman, council. My name is Sean Goff. I'm a resident of Richland County, live in Cedar Creek. My family, including my three small children, all under 11. Our home is approximately 10,000 feet downstream of the proposed site. In addition to being a father, I'm a business owner operating downtown Blythewood with some of my employees and their families residing in this creek as well. I'm also a farmer with a cattle operation with at times as many 200 head of cattle. While all valid, I am not here to voice my concerns over increased traffic and decreased property values. My concern is the health and well-being of my family and that of my neighbors. My home, and more importantly, my well, are 250 yards from this creek. As with almost all families residing along the creek, we do not have access to public water. We must rely on groundwater. Our cattle operation also relies on the water. 30 years ago, I played in the same creek and now my children play in this creek, along with their friends. I am familiar with two wastewater processing plants, one operating discharge in Congaree River and the other in Lower Saluda, both discharging enlarged bodies of moving water. While these plants have been properly permitted and all the sign-offs received from government-paid engineers and environmentalists, we routinely see no swim advisories for drier months due to dangerously high levels of bacteria. Are we to expect this, or maybe worse? Unlike the much larger Congaree and Saluda Rivers, Cedar Creek is very small in comparison, which doesn't even flow during the drier months of July, August, and September. How can we not expect to see elevated levels of bacteria and other dangerous elements? Our only source of water are the wells along this creek. We do not have access to public water. What guarantees do we have that this discharged water will not pollute the aquifers around and under Cedar Creek that so many families depend on? Data shows elevated bacteria levels downstream of similar facilities, the two specifically that I mentioned. How can we let our kids, while this is in place, play in this creek? Do I continue to allow my animals to drink from this creek? What about our cows? Do we continue to sell our cows to the citizens of Fairfield and Richland County? Cedar Creek is shared by both Fairfield and Richland Counties with most residents below the proposed site, which is located, which mostly located in Richland County. Like other Richland County residents, I have only recently learned of these plans. Many residents are not even aware of this. As the crow flies, the proposed site is more than seven miles from the Broad River, but only 10,000 feet of this actually border Fairfield County. How can this decision reside only with the Fairfield County Council? What representation do we have as Richland County assistance, citizens in this process? I respectfully request the council to lay this vote in order for the residents of Richland County to fully investigate the impact of what's being proposed and engage our representatives regarding this. And if this does move forward, standing invitation for any of the members to bring their families into swimming on the creek.
Hold all applause, please.
Next, Mr. Clinch Belser, speaking on wastewater.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman and members of the council and neighbors, my name is Clinch Belser. I don't know everyone here today, although I've met a lot. I've just been a landowner in Fairfield County since 1967. My grandfather first bought property here in this county in January of 1920, just 100 years ago. The house we have is at 67 Brew Mill Road. It's on Cedar Creek. We have about one mile of waterfrontage. I don't vote in Fairfield County, but I do pay taxes, a lot of them, since 1967. Fairfield County is a source of pride and pleasure for me and my family. I do not know all the particulars of this proposal to build a sewer plant here right across Cedar Creek from our property, just up a little. And I don't know that anyone in the room knows exactly what's going to happen with this rumored auto plant up in the northern part of the county. But I do know that Cedar Creek may be called Big Cedar Creek, but it is not a big creek. And I do know that putting a sewer treatment plant right on it cannot be good for the wildlife, the beavers and the wild ducks. And I also know that putting a cedar, a treatment plant right in this neighborhood, all these fine people living there, is not smart and it's not appropriate. You can talk about what you're going to do for your existing council constituents first, and then you can later plan for the future. But degradation of the creek and putting a smell in this neighborhood is not deserved by the current members and it's not really good for the county. It's good to have lofty aspirations for economic growth, jobs, money coming in, but we should also aspire to do it in the best possible way. My suggestion, my humble suggestion, is the treatment plant be located elsewhere, not across Cedar Creek from me, and not in a built-up residential area like the Syrup Mill Road community. We also should end up putting effluent in some larger body of water, not a small creek like Big Cedar Creek. It's not Big Cedar Creek. It should be in a bigger body of water like the Broad River or the Saluda River. And my final comment is that we should not try to save money in the short run. I understand this idea is the way to save money, to get this plant in there with blinders on for the long-term, the long-run costs in terms of degradation of the environment and what you do to the residents who live in your county already. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. George Walker, speaking on wastewater.
Good evening. I appreciate your allowing me to speak this evening. My name is George Walker. I'm a property owner with one foot in Fairfield County and the other in Richland County. Like many of the people here tonight, I am astounded to learn that Fairfield's county council is considering the construction of an industrial wastewater plant in a very inappropriate location on Syrup Mill Road. This beautiful residential area is comprised of properties varying in size from small to large. The thread connecting these homeowners is the love they have for the rural beauty around them and the peace and quiet derived from life in the country. For many of these homeowners, a special treasure is the pleasure garnered from living on a very beautiful creek, Cedar Creek. It is bad enough that county council would consider building an industrial wastewater treatment plant in the midst of this bucolic residential setting, thereby introducing light pollution, noise, and unpleasant odors for all in its vicinity. But to make matters worse, you would propose then to flush the large toilet down Cedar Creek. I ask you, members of county council, how you would feel about your children or grandchildren playing in this creek? Or having your domestic animals drink from this creek, along with the wildlife that thrive on it? Is it really too much to ask for your citizens to be able to enjoy the simple pleasures of life in the country? Cedar Creek often floods out of its banks during the winter and spring months, making for a very unpredictable volume of water traveling its limited confines. Conversely, during our hot, dry summer months, this creek bed is dry but for the odd stagnant puddle. This is no place for treated sewage or industrial waste to be jettisoned. It would quite frankly be morally reprehensible for county council to treat its citizens in this disgraceful manner. We all appreciate that SCE and G's mismanagement and misrepresentation during the failed construction of the nuclear reactors was devastating for Fairfield County and many others. You anticipated much more lucrative days ahead. County council's efforts to recover from this financial setback and to find ways to generate economic prosperity for the future of this county are to be applauded. However, the good folks along Cedar Creek and in the surrounding countryside should not be expected to bear the burden of this misconceived plan to construct an industrial wastewater treatment plant in their backyards. Clearly, the location of the industrial park miles from this location was decided on prior to working out the necessary inner workings of such an endeavor. Regrettably, it appears that the county had the cart in front of the horse. Look after your citizens who have made this beautiful area of the county their home. Their love for the land and their good stewardship of its natural assets will in time help to bring the type of quality growth that you need and seek. If you choose not to be a government that is by the people and for the people, you will not attract the type of growth needed to sustain these fair fields and woods. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Melissa Wingate, speaking on wastewater.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Wingate and I represent my family. We own 262 acres on Brew Mill Road. We will be the second, only the second property through which this wastewater passes. We have property on both sides of Cedar Creek. As people have said, it floods, you can't get across it, and then other times, you can walk right across it. Due to those floods, we've already lost acreage. We've lost money because the banks of Cedar Creek have collapsed into the creek. I'm not as well-rehearsed as some of these folks, but my parents worked their whole lives to be able to provide for their family and then to be able to be content and peaceful in their retirement. They bought this acreage 20 years ago to build their dream house, and they built their dream house on about 50 yards from Cedar Creek 10 years ago. Two and a half years ago, my dad was diagnosed with stage IV lung cancer, non-smoker's lung cancer. He never smoked, he never drank, he didn't do anything. He didn't work in an asbestos plant, he didn't work on the shipyards. When he went to MD Anderson in Houston, they told him that his cancer was probably caused by an environmental toxin, an unidentified environmental toxin. They couldn't tell him where, but that's where it came from. It wasn't genetic, which was good news for me and my brother, but it came from an environmental toxin. I wish my dad was here. He would know what to do. My dad's not here. He died six weeks ago from cancer caused by environmental toxins. Now you're talking about building a wastewater treatment plant 1,000 yards from my parents' house. It'll be the second property through which this water passes. Our well is 25 yards from this creek. All these people, their wells are right on this creek. Our children play in this creek, my dogs drink out of this creek, the deer we go and eat every fall, hunt and eat, drink out of this creek. And you cannot promise me, I don't care how many studies anybody's done or whatever, they thought they had done studies 50 years ago when my dad was getting whatever environmental toxin he got to cause his cancer. You cannot guarantee me that there will not be environmental toxins released into the air or released into our water that's passing 50 yards from my parents' house. For the health of my neighbors and my family, I hope that you reject or at least extend the research period that would go into this. We didn't find out about this until three weeks ago. It was a couple of days before Christmas when one of my neighbors called my dad's cellphone, and I just happened to have my dad's cellphone after he passed, and I just happened to answer the phone. So, from the Wingate family, who just lost its patriarch to lung cancer from environmental toxins, I would ask that you would reconsider and find another way to handle this wastewater. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Cameron Hoyt, speaking on wastewater.
Thank you for your prayer. We need it. I didn't know exactly what I wanted to say until something happened today on Syrup Mill Road. It's not quite unusual, because it happened to me 30 years ago. There was a note that came out on our Nextdoor app that said two horses were running loose. They're now home, they're safe, they're fine, but that's the kind of neighborhood this is. I work as a full-time real estate agent and I spend a lot of time with buyers who want to live in the country. My husband and I moved out two years ago to Center Creek. He's originally from, his folks are from Fairfield County, his parents, grandparents worked at the mill. The other day, one of my buyers sent me this. He said, "I want you to look at this land. Tell me about this one." Gorgeous tract of land located within minutes of Blythewood. It is rare to find a tract to enjoy all the beauty, the Rocky Creek and the mountain field. If you enjoy hunting, this property offers plenty of wildlife. This tract truly offers everything to make your dream home a reality. Guess what? That's the property Fairfield County thinks will make a nice site for a wastewater treatment facility. I'm not sure why, because it's surrounded by residential properties. In fact, within a two-mile radius, there are over 80 homes that have an assessed value of over $24 million. You couldn't find a higher concentration of nice homes and properties, even if you went over to Lake Watery. But these are not all big homes. A lot of them are modest homes that are only on one acre of land. But what they all have in common, they all represent people who are your constituents, people who moved here for a reason, for the peace and the quiet and the desire to be left alone, to enjoy their time on earth. There's a saying in real estate, it's called "location, location, location." And when I'm working with buyers, they want to know about stores, schools, internet, how deep to dig the well, how things grow. What they don't want to know is that there happens to be a wastewater facility treatment in their neighborhood. Property values of these 80 homes and the ones that are further afield yet adjoining Center Creek or Cedar Creek will be affected. There's no question about it, and not in a positive way. There will be fewer people who will want to move to this part of Fairfield County for the simple reason that no one wants to live next to a wastewater treatment facility. No one. I could give you a lot of facts and figures about what has happened in other areas where bad or quick decisions were made, but instead, I want to appeal to your sense of duty and your code of ethics. Y'all are all elected officials and you're elected to represent the people who live in Fairfield County. My husband and I were really excited when we found our property. And I want to take you back to those three words, "location, location, location." There's residential location, there's industrial location.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Jackie Workman, speaking on vision.
Good evening, Chairman Robertson and other council members. It is my understanding that ordinance 736 is being proposed to be voted on for one acre more or less of land donated by a council member to renovate a building for the amount up to $50,000 to be paid by the taxpayers. What is the purpose of this building? How will it benefit the taxpayers who is contracting to do the work? And what is the bidding process? The Fairfield County Council is willing to spend $50,000 of the taxpayers' money and we have no idea how it will benefit the public. And here we have Dominion willing to lease 8.12 acres of land for a dollar a year for 50 years for the senior citizens, for our children and children's children of Fairfield County. And you, county council, boldly rejected this generous offer that many citizens have fought for. There has been over $500,000 appropriated by the previous council to the Recreation Commission for construction of the building for the here-in-missioned property. But you all are supposed to know this. On July 18th, 2018, the Federal Regulatory Commission- On July 18th, 2018, the Federal Regulatory Commission removed the land out of the hydro zone, giving Fairfield County Council clear, not some, but clear authority to manage the land with a new lease agreement. Receiving 8.12 acres for 50 years for $50 versus one acre or less more of land given by a council member at a proposed cost up to $50,000 appears to be very, very questionable. Ordinance number 738, I oppose the spending of the $300,000 of taxpayers' money for the said property to be used for a water waste treatment site. We are talking about a community of blessed people. Shame on you for not recognizing Mr. Kurt Thurston and the 1,000 citizens that are saying no to your plans. Respect the citizens, recognize the citizens, reverence the citizens of Cedar Creek and Surat Mill Community. Ordinance 740, over the years, have been placed on hold, on hold due to the significant amount of asbestos. We, the citizens, demand environmental health and safety inspection of the removal of the asbestos. Why would you, our representatives, vote on and commit the citizens, taxpayers, to embark on such a dive venture? Please provide the taxpayers with five specific examples of how spending $11 million would benefit the rural areas of Fairfield County. You're quite welcome.
Next, Mr. Randy Bright speaking on sewer.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. For most of this past century, hundreds of thousands of dollars have been paid to consultants to tell us the very same message. It's an imperative that we expand our sewer and water capabilities. For most of this century until now, previous council and government regimes have completely ignored or not moved forward on that message, and the county has suffered since. That being said, we need, we need to first applaud this team for being the first ones to take that message seriously and understand that we've not only lost population but potential growth because of previous regimes not acting upon that imperative of expanding our sewer and water capacity. However, any expansion of anything, particularly sewer and water infrastructure, needs to ensure that it's a value investment, a value investment to protect the citizens and protect the county brand. And our county is named Fairfield's, and we don't want to jeopardize our brand, jeopardize our health, jeopardize our property values by having a location that does all of this. And I don't know all the facts yet, so... However, it is very clear that the citizens of this county would certainly be more interested in investing properly and paying more money to get a long-term site which actually serves and protects the community. And I think that's something that you guys need to think about long and hard. Protect the community, invest the money that is long-term return on value for the entire community. As you listen to us, first of all, I for one apologize for not reacting to the December 5th announcement that was in the paper about this project. And I apologize. Don't penalize me for that. Don't penalize the county for reacting late. Don't penalize the county for reacting too quickly. My suggestion is, let's get this thing tabled. Let's review the suggestions that have come out tonight, and let's decide what protects the county, both from an investment standpoint, a growth standpoint, a health standpoint, and environment standpoint. You guys have made some great decisions this year to protect the county, and let's continue with this. Don't rush into this decision. Let's study it. Let's review the input, and let's look at other alternatives that while may be more costly in the short run, may save us money in the long run and certainly save us a lot of other aspects of quality of life. Thank you for listening, and I know you'll do the right thing.
Thank you. That concludes segment one.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Davis. There are no public hearings. Now down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. First, we have item A, third and final reading of ordinance number 734. Ms. Davis, if you mind, please.
An ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance, number 599, to provide for the zoning reclassification from I-1 Industrial District to B-2 General Business District of 21.4 acres owned by Gerald and Kathleen Shannon, applicant, tax map number Property is located at Cook Road, Ridgeway, South Carolina 29130.
It's been moved and properly seconded and discussion?
If you would, please, for those that are present, would you kind of bring them, the audience, up to date as to what this is about?
Think if we could have Mr. Clausen give a brief description, please?
Yes, we have Mr. Chris Clausen, our community development director. He is prepared tonight to, to address and state what this is about.
Okay. Good evening, Ms. Chairman, members of council, members of the public. This is a request that came last year, and this is the, Shannon's owns some property on Cook Road. Sorry, I'll get that. They own 21.4 acres, and they had plans originally, prior to the rezoning in 2012, to use that as, for family purposes, and so they wanted to build another residence. The existing zoning was I-1. It would not allow for another residence, so they put in the request to rezone it to B-2. It went through the planning commission, they signed off on it, and it has gone through, obviously, the two readings thus far, and we had the public hearing. Everything has been published and noticed correctly. Are there any questions?
Any questions from council? Thank you, Ms. Claus. If not, take a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it. Now down to our third and final reading of ordinance number 735. Ms. Davis, if you will.
An ordinance authorizing Fairfield County to purchase a portion of real property identified as Fairfield County TMS number 13402000, containing 2.224 acres, more or less. Said property now or formerly of the Chapel at Lake Watery Presbyterian Church, USA, for public use or other uses deemed fit by Fairfield Council, Fairfield County Council and other related matters.
Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Goins.
Again, please, for those present, since some are not familiar with what's going on, I would ask if we could just give a brief explanation of this one as well as the following.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes, I'd be glad to. We have been trying for a number of years to build a fire substation out at the Lake Watery area. We had initially thought that we could acquire property that we donated by the Presbyterian Church, but in the end, we could not get clear title to that, that property, and so the church has agreed, instead of the property we were looking at, that they were going to donate to us, to sell us a piece of property that sits between the church and our existing property that's used for a convenience center for collecting refuse. So we're going to purchase that property. We have an agreement to purchase the 2.224 acres for $15,000. We do have this budgeted. We also have it budgeted to build the station on the property, and in the construction of that station, it will positively affect the insurance ratings of a number of people that surround it.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, entertain, all those in favor? Any opposed? Nay. Eyes have it, 621. Now down to item C, third and final reading of ordinance number 736. I think we have one recusal, Mr. Douglas. Ms. Davis, if you may, please.
An ordinance authorizing Fairfield County to accept the conveyance of one acre more or less located at 1134 Kincaid Bridge Road in Windsboro, Fairfield County, South Carolina, with TMS number 1250401009000, to be used for the public good or other uses deemed fit by Fairfield County Council and other related matters.
Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, one of the things we talked about...
Put it in your mic. Mr. Bill, please.
One of the things we talked about last time when we were discussing this ordinance, I cannot understand why we will not take the land from Dominion Energy when there's an opportunity to be able to work out and build some long-term relationships, and yet we're going to get this land that we don't have no use for as of today, and it's going to take us about $50,000 to fix this building for use. So, my vote is no.
Any further discussion? Ms. Taylor, if you would, please. Brief description, please.
Yes, this is a piece of property, I think everyone has a copy of it in their package, showing it's an unusual shaped, U-shaped piece of property with a building that's a little less than 6,000 square foot that sits on it. It does adjoin property that the county already owns, the DSS and the DHEC facilities, and a parking lot that we have, and it's being offered to us at no cost.
Okay. Any further discussion from council? If not, all those in favor? Any opposed? Nay. Eyes have it, four to two and one recusal. Item D is the third and... Let Mr. Douglas back in, please. Item D is the third and final reading of ordinance number 738. We're going to postpone on that until we get the administrator's report and preferably after executive session. It's technically not on the executive session, but we're going to hold it until after executive session. So, on to item E, second reading of ordinance number 739. Ms. Davis, if you would, please.
An ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance, number 599, to provide for the zoning reclassification from R-1 Single Family Residential District to R-2 Inclusive Residential District of approximately one acre owned by Lucius and Sheila Sampson, applicant, tax map number 1450212033000. Property is located at 322 Hillcrest Road, Windsboro, South Carolina 29180.
Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor? Any opposed? The eyes have it. Now down to item F, second reading of ordinance number 740. Ms. Davis, if you would. Oh, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. We're going to hold off on that one as well until after executive session. I apologize. Now down to item G, a resolution number 2020-1. Ms. Davis.
A resolution of Fairfield County supporting certain amendments of the 208 Water Quality Management Plan for the Central Midlands region regarding the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System.
All right. Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded. For discussion, could we get Mr. Rose to just give a description on the 208 plan, please, Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, council, thank you all for having me here tonight. So, the resolution that you have in front of you is in support of amendments to the Central Midlands 208 Plan. The 208 Plan is required under the Clean Water Act. What it basically does in very, very brief terms is it divides up the Central Midlands region, so Newbury, Richland, Lexington, and Fairfield Counties. It divides it up into subareas that are kind of quote-unquote "managed" by utility providers in that area, or, in the case of Fairfield County, the local government that has kind of primary control over that area. And so Fairfield County, the map that you have that's attached to that resolution, Fairfield County is divided up into several, they call them management areas. Ridgeway has one, Windsboro has one, Fairfield County has the bulk of the rest of the county, and then I think Mitford actually occupies a little bit of space up in the northeastern part of the county. Part of this process to build the wastewater treatment plant and, and develop this additional wastewater capacity for the, to support the development of the mega-site, requires that we amend that 208 Plan in two ways. So, part of the 208 Plan, it actually cites all of the wastewater treatment facilities throughout that region. And so one amendment is going to be essentially to, to memorialize, for lack of a better term, the, the site of the new wastewater treatment plant. The, the other aspect, the other part we're amending, is to actually give the Fairfield Joint Water Sewer System a management area of its own. That's a pretty important step. As we plan the Fairfield Joint System, as we plan for the development of this wastewater treatment plant, of course, I think we all know the state is going to shoulder an enormous portion of that cost, but they can't shoulder it all. It's going to have to also be borne by Fairfield County and Windsboro and, and the eventual customers of the joint system. But we have to be able to make a proposal to the state to say, "Look, we think we can shoulder X amount of money, and we'd like for you to provide the rest." Right now, we are just asking them to essentially fill some portion, some indeterminate portion of a $40 million hole, and that's just not good enough. We need to have some more specificity. So, the management area that we are cobbling together from a portion from what Ridgway now has, a portion from what Windsboro now has, and then I think most of, of the county's management area eventually, that, what we end up with, that kind of management area is going to be our customer base. And so the customers that are currently there, we can, we can look at potentially providing them with service down the road. Thomas and Hutton, who you'll hear from later tonight, can look at that area, can look at growth projections, and get an idea of what the customer base might be in five and 10 years. And using those figures, we can start to plan for the finances of the joint system and the finances of the wastewater treatment, or actually funding the wastewater treatment plant. But identifying that area and having it adopted is critical in that process. So what you have in front of you tonight is simply a resolution that supports the amendments to the 208 Plan that we're asking for. Windsboro has adopted an identical resolution. Ridgway has also adopted an identical resolution. The Fairfield Joint System tomorrow night will consider a resolution of its own committing to provide the kind of management services for the area that we hope will eventually be designated to it. And so we're asking you to also support those amendments. Those are then going to be forwarded to the, the COGS EPAC Committee, who will then make a recommendation to the COG Board, who then makes the, the final amendments to the 208 Plan.
I'm questioning.
Yes.
Explain D in, in resolution number 2020.
I apologize, I didn't have a...
What I'm trying to make sure is, because it talks about the location, to make sure that a location has not been identified for the wastewater treatment plant.
Is that the one we postponed until after the presidency?
No, this is the resolution we're talking about now, 2020-01.
You said explain D, that's why I was asking.
Yeah. Item D.
So, part of the amendment to the 208 Plan is to identify a site for the wastewater treatment plant. That, you know, there are, there are two separate amendments. One is pertaining to the site, one is pertaining to the management area, but they are, they're both important amendments that, that ultimately need to take place.
Okay, then, how can we be assured then that item D do not force us to select a location that we're talking about here tonight?
So if you, the, the current plan does rely on this particular location, if you choose to change the location, that's certainly within your purview.
Okay, but would it affect this resolution? Is what I'm asking.
We would probably need to amend it if you were to change the location. We'd certainly need to amend the exhibit.
Okay, then, so I'm moved that we table this resolution until we discuss the, the location of the, of the wastewater plant.
That's certain, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved improperly seconded. All those in favor? By raising your hand. What's that, four? Four in favor of tabling? All those against? Four to three. So, we will table the resolution till what time, Mr. Bill? Next point of meeting?
Yeah, until we discuss the other, the other.
Which meeting? Which meeting? This meeting or next?
This meeting.
Okay.
I mean, till we pinpoint a permanent site?
Yes.
Okay. You need clarification, Ms. Goins?
Please do.
Okay.
Okay, he's saying until after executive session. Am I clear on that? And one is saying until we pinpoint a site. So, which is it?
When, when would you like to table it? Till after the presentation, which we go through the flow of things, or what are you suggesting?
No, what I'm saying is to table it until we come up with a location for the wastewater treatment plant.
I don't think this has, you know, it would be involved in this, but we have a committee that we need to, to be looking into stuff, and this-
I agree.
This is for that committee. It wouldn't be tied into the sewer plant. C.D., can you give us any legal-
The question I asked, and I guess we've already voted-
Well, we've already voted on it now, it's just-
But the question I, but the question I asked is, is do D have anything to do with the location of the wastewater treatment plant? And your answer was, yes, if, if, right?
So, the, the 208 Plan's gonna have to be amended in, in two ways, and that certainly is one of the amendments that is going to take place. So, reading this, D speaks generally in terms of the wastewater treatment facility being located in the southeastern portion of the county. It doesn't identify a specific site. E, which is kinda the operative part of the resolution, you see, it does two things. It supports the designation of, provides for the new wastewater treatment plant. It designates the management area for the joint system, and it supports amending the map itself, which is what actually creates those management areas. But a portion of the resolution certainly is the, the amendments to the plan that deal with the, the location of the plant.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Ms. Trapp.
What was the reason that there wasn't a tax map number applied to the ordinance so the citizens would be able to pinpoint their location?
Taylor, can you advise?
I think initially, when we were looking at properties, we did not have it under contract at that point.
And when did we put it on the contract?
That important.
Ninety days ago? So, the ordinance was out, we just started on the December, the first meeting in December? And that was, yeah, that went 30 days ago. Is there any other properties that were looked at for wastewater treatment facility?
Yes, we looked at a number of other properties and continue to.
If we could, let's, let's keep comments down. I don't wanna clear the room, but if we can't keep, have decency ordered, I will clear the room. So, let's, let's remember to have decency ordered here.
And, 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 Mr. Taylor, I know one of the things you have been doing, though, is, is trying to find another site.
Yes, certainly.
Okay, you, you've been working on that. I know you and I have talked, I don't know how many times, and you are, you are looking at trying to pinpoint another site for the wastewater treatment plant, so it will not be located at the location that these citizens is talking about?
That is correct.
Okay.
Does she have, you found any?
We're continuing to look. We have identified other sites that we would possibly prefer. Again, those are not currently on the market. We're having to negotiate with those property owners.
Any further questions? Ms. Goins?
With that in mind, the statement is just made, the questions on my vote, I was thinking that he just simply wanted to hold to get an explanation until we come back in.
So, are you-
So, my vote is yes to, for this resolution. Oh, right, yes.
Tommy, can you advise, does she have to make, re, remake a motion to-
Okay, as I understand what has taken place, there was a motion to table, which successfully passed, four to three, the condition being that Mr. Bell sought the, a definition, a definite location of the wastewater treatment plant that's identified in the paragraph subsection D of the resolution. This being part and parcel of going forward with the ordinance number, excuse me, trying to scroll down, number 738, okay? Ms. Goins was on the prevailing side of the motion to table, so she can make a motion to reconsider that motion to table at this time, because she was on the prevailing side. If it gets a second, then it comes back up for a vote, and her motion to reconsider would be to go forward and not have the motion to table pass.
Okay.
That would be, from a procedural standpoint, what would have to take place at this point in time.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to reconsider on the question, on the previous vote.
Motion's been made to reconsider Resolution Number 2021. Do I have a second? Second. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2021?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry. What's up now would be a motion to reconsider the motion to table.
Or motion to table, that is-
It's only just for the motion to table. If, if the motion to table is brought back up for a vote and it fails, then the motion itself, the resolution itself, would be up for a vote at that point in time.
That is correct. Mr. Bell did make the motion to table. I do apologize. I think I got the football game on my mind. All right, Mr. Bell made the motion to table.
I have a question. Is this the actual vote on-
No, sir. This is just Resolution Number 2020, 2020-1.
But be clear, this vote on 2021 is tied in with the, the location what-
They are certainly connected.
Connected, yes, sir.
But not final.
Tied in with the location that the citizens are up here about today.
That's correct. That's correct.
A vote for this is pretty much endorsing the wastewater treatment facility.
I wouldn't necessarily say that. There's, there's nothing in here that couldn't be changed down the, there's nothing in here that couldn't be changed-
At the moment, as it stands now-
Following the consideration of the ordinance.
At, at the moment, as it stands right now, a vote for this resolution is an endorsement of the location for the-
A vote for this resolution is voting for a resolution that contemplates locating the wastewater treatment plant at its currently proposed site.
Okay, right.
Okay, and let me be clear, if I may, at this time, Mr. Chair.
I think, yeah, I think we would need a vote for the motion to reconsider, if I'm not mistaken, correct. So, all those in favor of the vote to reconsider by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, you were seconded by Mr. Douglas. All those in favor, reconsider by saying aye.
Aye.
Can we get a hand?
Yeah, let's do, let's do a hand check. Aye, to reconsider.
Good, yeah, my vote to reconsider.
To reconsider the vote for tabling. We have four. All those against, reconsider. Three. Vote to reconsider tabling it. Okay. Now, all those in favor of tabling the resolution for 2020, say, raise your hand by saying aye. Raise your hand.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I, I hate, I don't mean to interrupt, sir. The motion, the motion to reconsider the table has done nothing but bring it back-
Bring it back, that's correct.
-the original resolution for council's consideration. There was the initial vote to table, which passed, therefore, the Resolution 2020-01 was tabled. Motion to reconsider was made, that passed, so therefore, it's been removed, it's been laid back onto the table, and now the underlying Resolution 2020-01 is up for consideration for council.
That's correct. Does there still need to be discussion with that?
The discussion can go forward if there needs to be, or if a vote, if already the discussion has taken place. It's completely up to members of council this time.
Sir, but one of the things, I guess, that, when you look at this resolution, okay, and if you look at item D, it is so closely related that if, if, if ordinance 738 fail, you're gonna have to go back and rework Resolution Number 2020-01.
We would have to, we certainly would. We'd have to rework where the plant was to be cited.
Yes.
So, I wouldn't focus so much on D. I think where I would focus is actually the next one on E. So, the, if you look at the operative portion of the resolution, which is section one, it says that Fairfield County supports the proposed 208 Plan amendments. That's a defined term, right? So, if you go back to E, you'll see that the quote-unquote "proposed 208 Plan amendments" include providing for the new wastewater treatment plant, designating a management area for the Fairfield Joint System, and amending the map to include that, that management area. So, you know, certainly, the, the location of the plant is, I think, part and parcel with those proposed 208 amendments.
Yes, sir.
And I wanna make sure everybody's clear on that.
Any further from council?
Repeat that one more time.
The-
Make sure.
Sure, absolutely. So, the, 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 one of the amendments that will have to be made to the 208 Plan is the site of the wastewater treatment plant. And this resolution is in support of the proposed 208 Plan amendments, of which the site of the wastewater treatment plant is one.
That's how it is down Syrup Mill Road.
That's correct.
Right, right now.
That's correct.
But at the moment-
Certainly could be changed, but at the moment, that's correct.
Voting on is down Syrup Mill Road.
That is accurate.
So, Mr. Morgan, just to clarify, let everybody know exactly where we are as far as moving forward with this resolution one more time.
Yes, sir. At this point, again, council is under consideration whether to pass or decline to pass Resolution Number 2020-01. And again, as Mr. Rhodes has pointed out, it does have three components of the plan, the amendment plan, one of which being the site of the wastewater treatment plant. Obviously, the ordinance number 738 does not specify exactly where the wastewater treatment plant is to be located. It just provides for conditions, generally speaking, of a certain lot size, of a certain cost that meets the parameters of property that could be used as a wastewater treatment facility. So, I understand that there is a lot of people here this evening, because they have concerns about where the treatment plant could be located. The resolution does not specify exactly where it could be. Could be in the southeastern area, or as Mr. Bell said, it could be amended at a later date in time. Resolutions such as these are often, you know, with the 208 Plan, there's a lot of engineering that goes on back and forth. Information comes up, comes to light, that could be changed. And then, obviously, council has an opportunity to pass the third and final reading of ordinance 738, which talks about the purchase of property to be used for the wastewater treatment site.
Okay, but the point is, is it doesn't say specifically on this ordinance, but you and I know that where, where the location is-
That is correct. It does not provide a specific location, a specific TMS number, specific parcel. It just, at this point in time, indicates that it's currently planning for the construction and operation of a new wastewater treatment facility to be located in southeastern Fairfield County.
Okay, so, so then, if, if we decide to put the wastewater treatment plant on Long Time Road, would we have to do anything else?
At that point in time, geographically, it wouldn't be located in the southeastern portion of the county, so you would have to change-
Okay, let's, let's, it says Cook Road.
Also, there's an exhibit to the resolution. That exhibit would have to be changed. It does make note of where the site's gonna be.
My point is, if we pass this ordinance tonight-
This is a resolution.
I mean, yeah, but, but go back to the ordinance, but if we pass the ordinance tonight, it means that the wastewater treatment plant could be located on Syrup Mill, on Cedar Creek.
Could be, yes, sir.
Okay.
Anything further, Ms. Bell?
Shouldn't we have located a spot and pinpointed it and been precise with it before we pass this?
As for the resolution, I'm, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Rhodes. I mean, I'm not trying to, he and I have worked on this together, so I know he's a little bit more familiar with this. As for the specific location, there may be other instances where similar resolutions have passed where it does not have a specific site located.
Mr. Rhodes, if I may ask, Mr. Chairman, just one question.
You wanna get Mr. Trapp's question answered first?
I'm a little lost on the questions. Hang on. Get me up to speak.
We have pinpointed a location.
I think Mr. Taylor may be better suited to answer that one.
Some of it's gonna be driven by DEHAC permitting and engineering, and I think once we get Thompson Hutton up to speak, they can address a lot of that in better detail than, and I think than C.D. or myself could. I think-
And one other question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Who is the seller and agent that's handling the sale of the property?
Why were these chosen? Why were they chosen?
It was for sale.
Good, but the candidate didn't choose them.
He did not choose them.
Right, that's good.
This is only part of the process. Am I understanding it correctly?
That is correct.
That's all this is. It's not a finality of anything. It's only part of the process.
That is correct.
That's accurate.
Any further from council? All right, we're back to item G, Resolution Number 20-20-1, a resolution of Fairfield County supporting certain amendments of the 208 Water Quality Management Plan for the Central Midlands region regarding the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System. Do I have a motion?
Second it.
It's been moved improperly second. Any further discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, raising hand, signified by raising hand.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it, four to three. Now down to board and commission minutes. Each council member should have received this information. If you have any questions, no board and commission appointments, no old business, new business, approval of 2020 calendar year meeting dates. Do I have a motion? It's been moved improperly second. Any discussion? If no discussion, all those in favor of the 2020 calendar meeting dates, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Now down to our county administrator's reports. Ms. Taylor.
Thank you. First up, we do have C.D. Rhodes, our attorney, representing the Joint Water and Sewer Authority, and we have Mr. John Culberth of Thomas and Hutton, who is doing the engineering on the new proposed wastewater treatment facility. Obviously, we do have a lot of questions, and we do want to answer those as clearly as we can using the consultants that we have employed. This is a project that's been looked at by previous councilmen, councils, by previous administrators, well over 10 years. Studies have been done. I think someone noted that hundreds of thousands of dollars has been spent, and they have, looking at all types of different options. Because, again, it's known that we do have to have infrastructure in this county in order for this county to reverse its population loss and to economically thrive. Without water, without wastewater, we will not grow. So, we have looked at it for a number of years. We've looked at all these different options. We do have a willing partner in the state, because, again, the cost of this particular facility is well outside of the towns, Winsborough, which currently has water and sewer, Ridgway, or the county. We cannot achieve this alone. But the state, in conjunction with the development of the mega site, has agreed to step up and assist with creating a wastewater treatment facility, which will hopefully support economic growth through industrial development, commercial development, and residential development, or, again, help with the population loss that we're currently experiencing. Again, the town has done a wonderful job in getting the waterside solved. They have spent, I think, roughly $15 million putting a new water line into the Broad River that satisfies the water needs. However, again, sewer, in, in looking at that, our options are somewhat limited, and it is an extremely expensive process. The state has asked us to do certain legal, puts together certain legal frameworks, which Mr. Rhodes has been assisting us with, and we'll address that. And, again, we've, I've got to pair that with the engineering side, which Thomas and Hutton has been assisting us with. And, again, I wanna thank the state, because the state has borne most all of the cost on that engineering at this point. Mr. Rhodes, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, thank you. So, as you're all, I'm sure, very well aware, this Fairfield County, back several months ago, formally joined with Winsborough to create the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System. And, you know, while there are many ways that the joint system can support industrial, commercial, residential growth throughout the county, the primary reason that it was created was to allow for the construction of this wastewater treatment plant to support the development of the I-77 mega site. This idea of Fairfield County and Winsborough working together goes back, at least it goes back 10 years with our firm, and I believe it goes back much further than that. The effort, though, became a lot more urgent in 2017, when the county and the Department of Commerce really started the planning process for this mega site. It's 1,500-acre mega- It's a 1,500-acre mega-site. It has enormous advantages that make it attractive to a single large industry. And so, the information that we've received from the Department of Commerce, when you say a single large industry, think an automotive manufacturer. That's the scale that they're looking at. One serious limitation that the mega-site has, though, is that it doesn't have wastewater access. There are no wastewater lines there. Even if there were wastewater lines there, there's no wastewater provider in the county who can handle the wastewater capacity that an industry of the scale that we're talking about here would require. And so, it became necessary to add some additional wastewater capacity somewhere in the county. Commerce has been aware of that from the get-go. The county certainly has been aware of that from the get-go. And that was the impetus for everyone coming together in 2017 to really get after the creation of the joint system. So we began meeting in the spring of 2017 to plan for the creation of the joint system. If you remember back in the spring of 2017, things were looking at least halfway decent with the two sites or the two units out at V.C. Summer. The focus at that point in time wasn't so much on funding the wastewater treatment plant. The assumption was that there would be money available for that. The focus really was on how to get it built, how to have it operated, but that shifted pretty dramatically in July of 2017, when S.E.G. announced that they were abandoning the sites and the project. At that point in time, the focus became, how do we get this thing paid for? And that's where the assistance of the state really became central to making this a reality. This is a difficult undertaking, and really neither the county nor Winsborough nor the state has the wherewithal to get it done. It really requires the cooperation of all of these entities in order to accomplish. So the county and Winsborough formally came together in the spring of 2019 to create the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System. Systems like this have been used all over the state to do great things, to consolidate the utility systems in small towns in the Low Country, to purchase a water treatment facility from Duke in the upstate that provides water service to 11 or 12 small towns up there, small and large towns up there. This is a very flexible structure that's provided for under state law that works really, really well for groups to come together to finance a single, very expensive facility like a wastewater treatment plant. However, even with the combined efforts of the county and Winsborough, the construction of a wastewater treatment plant is far too big of an endeavor. And so, perhaps the most important role that this joint system serves, in addition to being a very flexible, very useful structure, is this is what the state, this is what the state requested of us, essentially. The Department of Commerce, the state, they are very interested in this project. However, they do not like to involve themselves in local politics. They like regionalism. They like it when cities and counties work together. They like to know when they are investing their money in a community that the rest of the community is behind it. And so, while certainly this is a very highly effective way of financing and operating a facility like a wastewater treatment plant, its most significant role is that it has sent a enormous signal to the folks at the state, in the Rural Infrastructure Authority, in the Department of Commerce, that Winsborough and Fairfield County and Ridgeway and everyone else in this county have come together and made this a priority. But we are now at a very critical point in the planning for this wastewater treatment plant. In order to get the funding commitments that we need from the state, we need to be able to give them some specificity. As I said, right now, there's a $40 million hole that needs to be filled, and we have to give them more than just saying, guys, we'd like for you to, you know, kick in whatever you can. We need to be able to go to them with some degree of specificity from a financial perspective, and also show that we are, that we're ready to accept their money when they're ready to give it. That's why the amendments to this 208 Water Quality Plan are so vital. It's a key component to being able to flesh out exactly what our customer base is going to look like, what the revenues of the joint system may look like once we're actually operational, so we can get an idea of exactly what financial burden the joint system will be able to take on itself. You know, Thompson-Hutton, right now, is working very hard on a rate study. They're working very hard on determining what that customer base might look like, but these amendments to the 208 plan are critical to allowing that to happen. So, the point we're at now is being able to present specific information to the Department of Commerce and to the General Assembly, to be honest with you, that we have our ducks in a row, that we have our finances in a row, that we know with some degree of certainty how much money we'll ultimately be able to come up with. Being able to define what that customer base is going to be is critical for that, and certainly being able to identify the site of the plant is equally critical for that. The site of the plant is not only important from a standpoint of just being able to move forward, but we also have to be able to acquire rights of way. We have to, of course, be able to do all of the permitting that's necessary to allow for the construction of a plant like this, and that site is the first step in allowing for all of that to be finalized.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
How was this site on Syrup Mill Road determined? Who came up with that site?
So, I'm probably not the best person to speak to that, because I haven't been intimately involved in the selection of the site itself. But I can tell you, just from our conversations among the joint system, it was a, it was a site that, number one, was for sale, which is important. It met all of the criteria that need to be met in order to build a wastewater treatment plant. It's large enough. It's located on a body of water. It's located, it's located on a body of water that is large enough to accept the types of discharge that we need.
If we could, Mr. Rhodes, please...
There were certainly lots of boxes that needed to be checked, and this site checked them all.
Mr. Rhodes, hold on for one second. I understand it may not be the answer that some of you want, but at least give others a chance to listen. So please, please hold your comments down.
Chairman, the questions that we have, I just want to make sure he's the proper person to...
That's why Thompson-Hutton's sitting here waiting for the presentation.
Yeah, I think when it comes to the, kind of, the technical reasons why the site works, Thompson-Hutton will be able to answer those questions for you.
Thank you.
So, I guess, the last thing I'll say is that this is, you know, building wastewater capacity within a county to serve industrial growth is a really tough thing. It's often kind of a chicken-and-egg problem. And I think it's made worse where you are trying to provide wastewater service for your kind of run-of-the-mill industrial site. The problem that you run into is, you know, the industries, they want the, all of the services to be there on day one. The utilities, the local governments would much rather have a tenant come in before they spend the money to extend those services. And that's a real problem, where you have your kind of run-of-the-mill manufacturing site that you see all over the state, because a wastewater treatment plant, even a fairly modest one like we're talking about here, takes a lot longer to build than your run-of-the-mill spec building or manufacturing site. That's actually not a problem that we have here. We are in kind of the unique position of being able to plan this thing out and have all of our ducks in a row, have all the pieces lined up, have the money in place, have the site, have right-of-way acquired, have all the permits done, and have it sitting there ready to go, making that mega-site marketable, but waiting for a tenant to come in. That's a, that's a unique benefit that you kind of have at your disposal. Now, certainly, if we can make the system viable prior to the mega-site being built, if there are wholesale and retail customers that make it a, that make it financially viable, and we can go ahead and build the plant, that's great. And that's, that is a possibility. But one thing I, one notion I want to dispel from your minds is that there is a scenario where this plant is going to get built purely in anticipation of maybe one day someone coming into that mega-site. That's not what we have here. No one's going to sign off on that project. The state's not going to give us money for that. When we build the plant, it's going to be because there are customers who are ready to receive that service and provide it with flow. So this is not an if-you-build-it-they-will-come type scenario. This is a serious planning process that is intended to make that mega-site marketable. And, and the point we're at right now is a very critical one. Yes, sir?
I have a question.
Okay. So I'm happy to respond to any other questions you might have about the legal side of this, how we got to where we are today. And if not, I'll turn it over to Thompson-Hutton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a clicker? Is there a clicker of some sort? No?
You don't have to verbally click.
We're going to do this like...
You don't have to verbally click.
First of all, thank you, Chairman, and everyone here. I don't think I've ever had anybody, had this many people here to talk about a treatment plant.
We care about our property.
Oh.
We only have one of them.
Anyway, I think as Jason pointed out...
Have you seen any of the comments, questions, of, 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 of the information that was sent forth by the Cedar Creek community?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you seen all of them?
I've seen every email that has come down.
Okay, so, and if you talk, then, let's try to address some of those...
We are at the end of this, and as I was listening to all this, this is kind of weird. We were going to move through a certain path and bring you down to a certain area, but sometimes it might be better to start at the end than at the front. Jason's already told you that this county has spent 10 years, in fact, 1997, next slide, 1997, the 208 plan already called it out, said you're going to have to do something. So the county and previous councils took the forethought and came up with 80 million, and 100 million, and 72 million, and on and on and on. And then, the mega-site, as it's called, came into play, and everybody wanted to learn and find out, how can you deal with a mega-site? What are you supposed to do? Who has a million gallons in wastewater that you would transfer that to? And by the way, an OEM does not take 4 million gallons per day, just so everyone knows. It's not. It's less than that. This plan is not just for the mega-site, it's for numerous opportunities of residential and commercial industrial development in the southeast part of the county. So, that's, that's how the flows were calculated. Let me just put it to you that way. Jason came to us, and the state came to us and said, hey, we've got a $100 million solution. That seems unreasonable. Can we come up with another, better, more affordable solution? We said, sure, we'll take a look at it, but the first thing we want to do is we want to see what the existing plants are doing in the county. Next slide. The, this is by DHEC's website. DHEC provided the remaining capacity associated with the Ridgway plan at 30,000 gallons, which is on the eastern part of the I-77. And we said, well, let's look at the Winsborough plant, because, goodness, it's a bigger plant. Let's see what we can do there. Let's go in and check what we call their checkbook. Let's see if these people are actually using the flows they said they were going to lose. Well, lo and behold, we were able to come up with 255,000 gallons we could add back to the capacity of Winsborough. So we bought, we bought some time, right? We bought a half a million gallons per day. Fortunately, you can't just go in and wipe out someone's capacity, especially for those citizens there in Winsborough. So, we had to come up with a plan. So in doing so, we started looking at this service area, which is what C.D. was referring to earlier. Next slide. So, in red outline there, you'll see the service area that he's referencing, and you'll see a little dot down to the bottom left there that says wastewater treatment facility in that area. And then you see the mega-site up to the right, it's kind of inside the red area. Basically, we worked with the county in determining where they are seeing existing inquiries, growth, permits, things like that. There's an existing industrial part there that can be turned around to give Winsborough a little bit more flow, if necessary, for their growth needs. At least, that was the thought. And then you had an interchange that was growing, another thought. You can't all go to Ridgway, they only have 30,000 gallons. So something in this area was determined to be the best, even though we would just have to pump and force main from the industrial site. Again, the industrial site is just one piece of the puzzle. It's not all of the puzzle. All right? So...
I can't see that chart. Is there a date on it?
Oh, which, which chart?
A date?
Hold on. I might be able to look on here and tell you. Oh, it's too, it's too small on my piece of paper, too. I don't, and I have bifocals, I just can't see. Can you see it? I'm going to go with at least November.
Yeah, it looks like...
November 21st. So, thanks, around Thanksgiving, a little before. Okay, so, this is how the immediate service area was kind of looked at, and looked at where the growth was along that corridor. And this treatment facility would be able to support growth along that corridor, either coming up from the south or coming down from the north. It, it's, you know, one of the decisions you have to make if you're talking about putting in infrastructure. Seems reasonable. Now, just to point this out, there were several, there were at least four other property looked at, and no willing seller. There is still a couple other properties in play that Jason mentioned earlier, and as Ty has mentioned as well. So it's, it's not off the table that this may bump somewhere else, but at this point in time, and today, we just wanted to make sure, here's the information. So it still may move, but at the same time, it may not. So I'm just kind of putting the information together and out here, so everybody can ask questions and do whatever. So, once we decided it was going to be in that lower area, we had to go to DHEC, because it doesn't make sense to say you're going to put a treatment facility somewhere, next slide, if you can't get a waste load allocation, which they calculate. We don't calculate it. The county doesn't calculate it. They calculate it. We ask for their input, and they tell us if that, that particular area or that creek system can handle the flow. They sent back and said, sounds great. This is it. Remember, we're just giving you what the flows can be that can go through that creek, but you still have to go through the process, which is why I almost jumped to the end of the presentation, because there's still a process that we're moving through. But this location was identified, was given, you know, the allocation from DHEC, and that's all it is, is an allocation. We started looking around for property, not only at this pinpoint, but at other points, as I just mentioned, and as Jason has also said, there are other, at least one other, I know, in play for sure, maybe. At the same time, at the same time, we have to move forward to keep the process going. So the process is moving along here. We came up on a willing seller with two brokers that I had nothing to do with. They coordinated the discussions and contracts and all that, and then they told us, I know somebody took a picture of our truck, we, y'all put that on social media, that was great. It's for wetlands delineation, because anytime a county or public body, I don't care whether it's Fairfield County, any county, if you're looking to do grant funds or anything else, due diligence has to be done in that certain timeframe, and that option is important. So nobody's running out buying and giving a check tomorrow. There's one last thing that had to be done, which was related to the wetlands delineation, and make sure the wetlands were not impeding on the property as far as the development would be concerned. So, if you don't do these things, you don't get federal money, you don't get state money, you don't get any money. So you have to do this process related to due diligence, which we did. So, once we found a little spot, we found the property that was a willing landowner who wanted to sell. Next slide. And bam, the thing, the thing fit. The thing fit on site, and one of the speakers brought up MBR, membrane treatment plants. This is a tertiary treatment facility. As you can see in the bottom right, I don't know if you can see it really clear, but that is what the facility looks like. It's not old technology, it's new technology.
Is it right on the roof?
Accessibility to Syrup Mill Road is important, because we will have...
Unfortunately, unfortunately, we can't do a question and answer Unfortunately, unfortunately, we can't do a question and answer for them. That's why we sent out the letter previously before the meeting. So if we could, just let him go through the presentation, please.
I'm just trying not to break any rules. I'd be more than happy to answer this question after. The, uh, the, there's 800 feet, 521 feet, 716 feet. There is a buffer, I think, of the building structures off of a roadway. I can't remember what it's got to be exactly, where's Chris? But somewhere around 50 or 100 feet. So it may come back a little bit more, but there's still room to do that when we're 521 feet off of the property line in the rear. So there's still room to move this around to get it exact if this is the chosen spot. We just wanted everybody to see that this is what, what it was and what needed to be, where it was going and how it kind of looked right now, unless it changes. And I also wanted to point out the MBR system and the tertiary treatment that is being done. So if you go to the next slide. Whoa. This is Trent, Thompson, you wish for me?
So one of the things to point out, and part of the reason the MBR or membrane bioreactor system was chosen, again, for its advanced level of treatment that this wastewater will come out, but also the small footprint, in fact, that this thing can be put inside of an enclosure and, you know, a building that's not your.
Next slide.
Wastewater facility.
As you can see right there.
You can put this thing inside of something that can look like a golf clubhouse, was the case of this.
It's all covered, it's got odor scrubbers, it's bio-silids hauling in disposal. It's the highest, it's the state of the art that you can do right now. Yes, sir.
You mind if I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Is there a reason it couldn't be located?
I don't mind, I'm sorry.
Is there a reason it couldn't be located on the mega site?
On the mega site? Well, considering the growth factors that we had, that we had, that we were trying to contend with, between what you thought you could get customers first on would be, would be in this area. And you got to have customers before you can have a rate study, before you can ask for money. I did answer a question.
Thank you.
Can I, let me, let me, let me take a stab at it. So, short answer is yes, it could be located on the, on the mega site. The issue is that's not probably the best site countywide, because if you're only going to try to serve the mega site, then put it there, no issues. But as we said, as far as what CD mentioned with the 208 plan, the goal here is to have larger investment for the overall regional community, benefit the overall area, and the best location for that is closer to where the site is. So it benefits not.
Whether it's the syrup mill site or some other site in that area, it is the area that's going to grow first.
If the state's going to help provide $40 million to pay for the treatment plant, then we want it to benefit the entire region, not just the mega site.
Yeah, creek on the mega site.
Nice.
Mr. Bell asked if there was a creek on the mega site.
Is it?
Okay, okay. There's not a, there's not a creek that DHEC would approve a waste load allocation.
Right.
So even if the wastewater plant went on the mega site, you'd still be pumping back to the same point, you know, because this is where DHEC authorized the point load allocation.
Well, we certainly can verify that with DHEC if you would like, but that's.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am? Yes, sir?
Couple of things the citizens talked about with dry beds in the summer and overflowing beds in the spring and winter. Tell me, um, how that's going to impact the wastewater treatment.
Is, is that addressed in your presentation?
It's, it's towards the end, it certainly is. I can get there.
Is it possible for we can go through the presentation?
Yeah, we, we actually grouped all the questions.
Yeah, because everything that was addressed via email, the questions sent in, I think you guys, I was all in the presentation, so.
But we wanted to tell everybody what was being proposed prior to answering all those questions, because some of these questions are being answered now. There is odor control being placed, everything is covered. It is tertiary treatment. It is, the one on the left is what is being discharged, not the one on the right. There's 637,000 gallons of that treated water are going to be reused back into the membrane system. So, you know, it is, credit to the gentleman earlier, it's a membrane system, it is one of the state of the art. Fact is, we don't have a, I think he said aligned area, so we're not doing that. But at the same time, we are taking it to this state of the art treatment scenario. Next one. So, and, and speaking to a lot of the concerns that were brought up via email, and I just mentioned enclosed influence, so odor control, scrubber areas, tertiary treatment, mentioned that, reuse quality is what we're dealing with. So if somebody does want that to irrigate, wherever they can, they can use it, it's used for irrigation in a lot of places. Enclosed processes and pumps, automatic alarms and skaters, so if we have any, any kind of issues, all that technical bells and whistles will be there. And this is a similar facility done in the coastal areas. This isn't, this is done, this type of system that we're promoting, or proposing rather, is the one that is done in coastal communities where you're dealing with property next door worth, you know, 2 millions, upwards to 2 million dollars, right next door, which is a picture of that right there. And the reuse, some of it is used, in the top left corner of that is a golf course, they use the reuse. So as you can see, there are, I don't know, lots of houses around that treatment plant and they don't seem to have a problem. Next one.
Where is that?
Here are some other areas. Here are some other areas.
Hold for me one second. This is the last time, I'm going to mention about outbursts, we all were trying to listen. So if a deputy comes to you and asks you to be removed, you're going to be removed.
So, give a little bit more detail about the actual facility. As you can see, it says bio-rin there, it's actually the, the odor control scrubber, so everything's sucked in, brought in there and cleaned before it's released. Exterior of typical proposed facility, you can see that it's nice and clean, it's all enclosed, we're not, there's no big aeration basins that you're looking at. I mean, it's none of that, the old school stuff that you see driving down 77. That's not what's being built. That's not the picture. That's the picture. That's what's going to be built. Now, it may be a different color, maybe you want blue or something, I don't know. But that is the color that you're dealing, the, the, the plant that we're talking about. So we had a lot of questions that Councilman Bell asked, wanted to know if we had received all the questions. And all I can tell you is based on our data, and we have Jeff DeBessonette here with us, and also, as you've already heard from Trent, Lisa Musicari and Fred Sororin here with us to help us clarify any question that you may have on these matters. The potable well impacts are a question, and I'll, just to be fair, there was roughly 100 questions, something like that. We took the questions and kind of grouped them into areas that seem fit from an engineering perspective. Some of them were council questions, we, of course, did not answer those. We didn't answer any financial questions either. So we stuck with what we know. At the end of the day, we had questions about potable well impacts. We, in the year, considering the tertiary treatment that we're doing, we didn't see any, any concerns with that related to discharging it in that area. Usually having a treatment facility that treats waste instead of septic tanks and other forms of treatment, the, septic tanks and other forms are about 5 to 20% causes of any kind of well contamination. That's on the DHEC website, that's not me. I've never been asked to fix a well that was impacted by a treatment facility.
So usually it won't affect wells?
No, sir. Yes, sir, I am saying that, yes, sir.
And, uh, and I'm sorry to back up, but the wastewater treatment facility, what's the square footage roughly of the, of the plant?
The big thing is going to be less than two acres.
Less than two, yeah. It's a less than two acre build with, as you can see, numerous amount of buffers around it. And if we have to move it back off the road, we hadn't clarified that with Chris, that would be one of the prob, one of the final things that we would do.
So let, let me just say this too, because we kind of danced around. So the, the level of treatment we're talking about with this MBR is, is near drinking water standards. I mean, this is about as clean as you get, it's going to be far cleaner than the water in the creek.
Something you made that I've always had a concern with, and you just made that statement about septic tanks. And I said to someone today, there are thousands of septic tanks all over that deposit all kind of waste into the soil that goes into water that we have no control over whatsoever. There's never no testing done on our septic tanks, nobody is following up on them, but all of it goes into the soil, eventually it ends up in our drinking water because it's not contained on our property, no matter if it's a block, or it's a thousand acres, it moves. This is one way of ensuring that it is contained, it's under regulations, it's treated. And I'm saying that because, and I will say later, I'm going to follow up, but I'm just saying that because of the need for clean water and a water and a sewer system in Fairfield County if we're going to grow, but it is state of the art. And I'm, when I did my research, what you're showing me is what I saw. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So moving on to property values, I, I think I showed you a picture where a coastal community was right next door to it, didn't seem to have any issues. This particular site is actually, whether it's this one or another one in the area, just to clarify that, has buffers associated with it. So hopefully it can be hidden from sight in any way we can, shape or form. We're going to, we will do our best to accommodate that. As far as odors are concerned, I mentioned odor scrub system that was in place. As far as noise, it's no different than any, you know, the structure will be in, you know, sound attenuation walls on the structure to minimize any pump sounds and things of that nature, nothing more than, I, I don't even know, I'm trying to think of something with that kind of buffer with those trees around, I'm not sure if anybody would hear anything unless you were there on the site. I imagine if you were on the site, it would sound more like office-type activity, not, nothing more than that.
Decibel levels.
Yeah. Decibel levels.
To the lady of father passed, I'm sorry. I looked for somewhere to build a house and the site I wanted, we had a sewer plant right over the hill. I was told how everything was done at the plant and I built my house. There was never a odor and the water was so clean, we ran our four-wheelers through it and I've had to get out in it several times, so it didn't make me sick, didn't bother me at all. We lived in the house for over 25 years and I raised three girls in that house and all of them are healthy.
So, thank you, thank you, Councilman. So moving on, I just spoke about the noise, spoke about the traffic. There was something about the construction traffic and dump truck traffic. The, once the plant is operational, you may see one or two dump trucks just getting the bio-silids and taking it to a landfill. It's not going to be dumped anywhere, that's all contained and then packed up and going. Now during construction, and I put Jason and, on, on the hook for this one, that what we're doing with construction and we're, we're building the roadway, we will monitor that situation if we have to, to do something. That happens a lot when you do construction projects. We may have to look at the roadway as it goes through, but I feel sure we can take care of that as well within the budget that we have in, in place. The regulations, there was, I was trying to remember everything that went on with this. I can't remember exactly what the, the regulation was, I mean, is this going to be regulated, I think was the question and how it was supposed to answer. It'll be, you know, it's plain and simple, it is under state and federal law, where you can't do anything unless you have a state and federal permit, period. Creekside, again, we got the waste load allocation from DHEC, that's not something we magically came up with here. I mean, no one here at the county did it, no one here at the engineering firm did it, or any previous engineering firm that was doing something. That was given to us by DHEC based on their modeling efforts.
Can I, let me chime in here too, John. So, so kind of to both of those points, we talked about earlier, and this is a step along the process. So, all that's happened so far is DHEC has given a waste load allocation for this creek that says creek can handle it, given certain parameters, these are things you have to meet. Then there's an entire process that we'll have to go through with the state to have them review the plans for construction, design, treatment process, all that.
Yep, and we'll show that.
We haven't started any of that.
Yeah, you, that's why I said we almost wanted to go to the end instead of.
Well, have you seen the pictures of the, the flooding get to creek?
We, yes, we had pictures sent to us, yes.
So we, let me ask you a question. If the flooding is occurring now without the treatment facility being there, then you are pumping more gallons into it, don't you think it's going to flood?
Well, we, we did that math and, you know, you can only plan for so many things from our side, if, from the treatment plant side. The treatment plant has an operation manual that's put in place. If something happens, there's a pumping hall scenario that pumps, that jumps in place. The discharge point is shut off, the pumping hall comes on and takes care of it. So that's the waste question. Now you want to answer the, which to me, the waste question is more important, because if we're flooding, I don't want a bunch of, you know, something to happen upstream of the system and get in our way. So, that's the first thing. Second thing is, are you flooding? Well, if there was flooding in 2015, we all were flooding. I don't know the date stamp on any of those pictures, I don't know if there was one on there.
That thousand-year flood.
If it was during 2015, we all, there's a lot of pictures out there like that. It was not them. Okay, well, we did some math. So the math is on the board here, you're not, you are correct, you are adding discharge to the creek. At a two-year storm, you're talking about 846.6, these are rain events and this is how it's measured, millions of gallons per day. 4MG equates to about 0.5% of an ad, 0.5%. 25-year would be 2 and 1/2 billion gallons per day is flowing through that creek, based on USGS, this is not my numbers, USGS, you can go on their website and look it up. 4 million gallons a day equates to additional 0.16%. 100-year peak is 3.45 billion gallons per day that would flow through there on a 100-year storm event. That equates to 0.12% of additional flow on top of the 4. But I imagine if we get above 100, we're shutting the plant down and pumping and hauling. So, that's, that would be my, my take. The 2015 events or any event after that, I'm not aware of. You know, there, there are things that can be looked at on the creek, if this is the chosen site, that, that can be addressed with the county as we move through the process. Again, we're moving through a process. Placement with the mega site or this, the mega site equates to about less than 25% of this flow. This is, it's not about necessarily just the mega site, it's about, I mean, yes, that's a key component, right? Because if you don't have it, they're not coming. And if they're not coming, nobody's working. It's just, just the way, way it is. That's just the bottom line of economic development, that's economic development one-on-one. Infrastructure is important to the development of any community, not just here, anywhere. So, we went through some of the placement and while we went there, got that all right. And the zoning, I'm just going to be, I almost fell out my chair when I talked to Chris about this. Where's Chris? He might, he might hit me. But we called him up when we were looking at the zoning scenarios for this county related to RD1. And rural residential, all zoning categories allow for wastewater collection and treatment every single piece of your properties. Because you have septic tanks and wells and things of that nature. So if you don't have that in your zoning, they can't do it. So it's in the zoning, so you're doing it. So, we were very pleased to hear that RD1, which is what this is zoned, so it's zoned properly for the activity that is being proposed. Okay, so this is the slide I probably should have went to at first, so we could kind of maybe ease some minds a little bit, right? So, I don't know if everybody can see, but the dash, the dash line, I keep walking away. The dash line is the where we are part, okay? You see all them other parts? We're not there yet. This is a step. Granted, it's a first step, it's a big one, it's letting everybody know this is going on. So it's a big one, and we want feedback, we want these things. We would definitely want to know that we, that everybody was concerned about odor, we would definitely want to know that everybody's concerned about sound. We definitely want to know that everybody's worried about lighting, which is security packs that are pointing down to the ground, not up. We definitely want to know that somebody's concerned about traffic. So, this is part of that process. Having the waste load allocation does not give us the permit, nor does it give the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System the authority to discharge yet. All it did was provide us a waste load allocation. Now, do we want an MPDS discharge permit, whether it's at this location or another one? Absolutely. Now, how do we get that? We have to decide on a site, we have to submit that site and all the engineering reports to DHEC. And then DHEC goes through a public notice. They'll post it and decide one way or another if they're going to have hearings or not. That's the process. That's the process. This is not the final process, this is the middle. And yes, we would all like to have a site to place the treatment plant, absolutely. We'd love for that to happen. If it's not, and this council's forethought to do it tonight, it's going to have to be soon or we're not going to submit for the discharge permit. So somewhat, something's going to have to happen. Either we move forward in that direction or we, or we don't. So, everybody look at the dotted dash line, right? That's not quite half, right? The 208 amendment, okay, well, CD kind of did some things. So it's really at that shaded light green thing. The 208 amendment that y'all approved, that's really, that today is y'all's resolution to support it. It doesn't mean anything's going to happen at the 208. They're being introduced to it on, later on in Wednesday. So, but there is, coming after that is property acquisition, I don't know if everybody can read it. Then there's MPDS permit application, some middle to DHEC, which goes along with a PR and construction plans and all that stuff. And then you have to get a SED construction permit, then you have to secure funding, then you have to construct a plant, which will take 24 to 30 months. And then, after all that's done, you still got to go back to DHEC and get a permit to operate and make sure you're meeting every regulation, state and federal that comes down that they enforce.
John, I'm sure this isn't you guys' first time going through this process.
Yes, sir.
Have we, have we been, have we been along the lines they see everyone else going on or?
Yes, sir. I mean, this isn't, this isn't abnormal. Normally, when you start, you start pinpointing down for property, most folks get concerned, that is, that's normal. Trent just had some of that in Georgia and another county. It happens in Savannah, it happens in Alapalms, Mount Pleasant, Columbia for that matter, they're not building a plant, but they do other things. So it's not uncommon for people to get, want to know the answers to the questions. And hopefully, this PowerPoint is here for you guys and you see fit how you wish to use it and hopefully move in the right direction. But you're on track, I mean, you're not behind, you're not ahead, you're just, you're, I think you're right in a spot to where you're letting the public know that this is, this is what we're thinking about. And if, if, if the consumption is, we can't think about it right there, then that's something that we got to move forward on something else. But at the same time, you do have an investment that's already been done a few miles up the road.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Is it fair to say that if the Certmeal Road property is not the property that we choose to use, and we choose to use another piece of property in that area, is still going to discharge into that creek?
Yes, sir.
And no other creeks could be located or the waterway couldn't be used or anything?
It's going to go to that area. Yes, sir. So, the last slide, just kind of give an overall summary of what, what's been going on and what, what you have going on. And we wanted to leave everybody with it. It says, "DHEC sets the water quality standards to meet and creates a margin of safety." So they're creating margins of safety in the allocations that they're giving us. The site layout selected treatment plant will be willing, which is a willing property seller, state-of-the-art plant, have backup systems, it'll be a good neighbor with odor controls, noise control, buffers. The discharge will not increase flooding potential or be impacted by it. I mean, I brought those numbers up, .12% on the, on a hundred-year storm event, which is all, by the way, the hundred-year storm event is all you plan for when it comes to when you build a new facility. That's what the ponds are. There are no concerns about harm to water supply wells that we can see. More than welcome to listen to, to anything that y'all may have on that, I'd be happy to look at that data. We didn't see any from DHEC. All systems, starting with industrial facilities, are regulated under federal and state law. The system would create residential, commercial and industrial growth opportunities for the county, period. And we're, we're in the permitting phase, we're trying to get to that point and DHEC will receive public input, input through that public notice. If a site is chosen, whether it's this one or another one, it doesn't matter, that process is still the same. And I appreciate all of your time and if there's not any more questions, I'm about to burn up. Do y'all not have air conditioning? Is that on the record? I'm sorry, did y'all cut me off?
Old building.
Oh, my God.
Questions, council?
Thank you. Thank you for your explanation, for your presentation and everything. All of the people, what you're doing, I know it is a very changing situation and I know I appreciate all the citizens out there, you know, having the input in, but I cannot stress enough, necessary this is, and I would like this to be defined, it is a wastewater treatment plant, not raw.
Sue it. I don't know whether, I have one more question, whether, I don't know, you or Mr. Taylor. What is it for the property value that makes decreases or increases, or maybe I missed that?
We haven't, we, I'm not a broker, I don't, don't pretend to be one. So, at the end of the day, I just know some of the facilities that we've built in high-end neighborhoods and they don't seem to have a problem with it. And their values did not decrease.
Have you, Ms. Taylor, have you looked into?
We did, we tried to explore that. I do know Department of Commerce says the majority of growth occurs around sewer plants. If you don't have a sewer plant, you know, you're not going to get growth, simple as that. It occurs within about a 20, 25-mile radius of a sewer plant. Our assessor, Gary Hensley, I know when he assesses a lot, if an acre has access to water and sewer, he assesses it at $5,000 more in value than he does an acre without water and sewer access.
Okay. Well, there you go. I didn't know that.
Well, any further? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, council, chairman.
Thank you. Next item I have, Public Works Department, the purchase and delivery of surplus mulch. As we had discussed in the past, we do have a problem in getting rid of the, the amount of mulch that's built up at our debris site. We've had a number of people from the community wish to have it delivered to them. What we had been doing in order to get rid of the waste was taking it to Richland County, which was costing us. And it did make sense to try to work out a solution where we could provide local citizens with the mulch because we need to get rid of it and they're requesting it. So, our local taxpayers getting a service of mulch delivered to the house that they can use as opposed to us having to pay to dispose of it, I thought was a good situation. However, we did run into some issues with our procurement code and such because this is a public product and we are not supposed to just give it away. So we did work out a solution with our attorney where we will be providing it at a minimal cost, a delivery cost.
And that's $10, right?
And that is $10, yes, sir. Mr. Morgan, would you like to add anything to that?
Oh, yes, for Mr. Chairman, members of council, what we did also in order to protect the, the county with this is provide for legal terms, basically a release. So therefore, if a person were to acquire or have a delivery of the mulch, then they would release the county from any future potential legal claims or any liability issues that would arise either with the mulch itself or during the delivery. So we wanted to make sure as part of this process, we provided the legal protection for the county as well.
Is this from a period of time or is open, open fee?
Essentially, it's open as long as we have mulch. And sometimes we are out of mulch and we are looking to incinerate a bulk amount of mulch as opposed to continue to grind it, so we may run out of mulch.
Okay, thank you. Well, it's been moved and it's probably second, and any further discussion? If not, this is action items, are all those in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it. Ms. Taylor?
Thank you. The next item we have is something that's been worked on for a long period of time and is budgeted through the bond, in fact, and that is the restoration of the courthouse. So renovations and restorations need to be made to the courthouse. It does have water infiltration in the roof, which is causing damage, causing some other issues that aren't acceptable. We have gone through the process, we do have Sheila Pickett here. Ms. Pickett, if you could come and explain the process that was used to select an engineer or engineer or architectural firm to perform the initial study on the courthouse, to come up with what needs to be done and then eventually, hopefully, to do the plans and renovations there. We had, I think, had five different people, six people, I think, apply, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
We put together a committee, which Ms. Pickett oversees, and based on their recommendations, you have come up with?
Yes. Good evening, council and citizens of Fairfield County. A solicitation was issued, RFQ for architecture service for our courthouse for improvements to our courthouse. We had six firms to submit. There was a committee of five that was set up who evaluated each one of those firms. The firms were evaluated down to a short list of three. Out of that short list of three, those firms were brought in for actual interview with the committee to discuss their proposal that they submitted and any other questions that the committee had at that time. Based on the scoring, the proposed firm that the committee wished to award to, you have in front of you, USGMK, to provide those services. Reference checks was done. The work was basically on architecture service for historic projects and of course, the courthouse. Three firms were interviewed, the top three. Yes.
Two of them gave too much explanation, huh?
Yes. Yep.
I'm okay with that, so I move to except for...
It's not an action item, it's not action, so. Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, Ms. Pickett, I appreciate it, there's no more questions.
Hey, just keep rolling.
Okay. I'll just run through the next list, I'm very happy to announce these things. Again, I had indicated earlier that the state's been wonderful in working with us lately, whether it's on infrastructure or whether it's on actual specific economic development projects. And I want to announce that the state has helped us with a rural infrastructure grant for $300,000 that they have given us to help with Meckrelang, that particular company was struggling. And a lot of times, it's easier to step in and help save an existing company than to lose a company and have to re-recruit someone else to replace them. So the state stepped in to help us with $300,000 there. They also stepped in to help us with $150,000 on a rural infrastructure grant for Pacific Management Holdings and a $1.25 million grant, rural infrastructure grant for Victory Boats, which is another, again, a new industry that we have coming here.
Okay. Any questions, concerns, comments? If...
That's it, grateful. That's my only comment, grateful.
All right. Moving on down to, there is no clerk to council's report. County council time, any council member would like to be recognized. Mr. Douglas?
The lady that complained about an acre and building donated to the county that that it needed refurbishing for $50,000 really has no idea what she's talking about. There's a 6,000 square foot building on the lot. First, it was a family dollar for years and the second lease was a Dallas's company that spent $750,000 to remodel. Another lady talked about Mount Zion being made offices. Her questions could be answered, they said all she had to do was read the whole contract. This has happened before because she only looked for the bad things in the county and none of anything good. I've heard people voiced their opinion about the new Providence emergency hospital. All they have to do is run down to the old hospital and run back to the back, look at it and go down and look at Providence. It's a great facility and I don't see why anybody would complain.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Any other council member?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trapp?
I had the opportunity to attend Jenkinsville Water Board meeting last Wednesday night where they received an award for the best tasting water in South Carolina for rural distributors. And I wanted to say congratulations to their president and to their board.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. Mr. Bell?
And I would also like to recognize Jamie Webb from the Ridgeaway Fire Department, he's a bus mechanic. But one of the things he did is he competed in the National Bus Mechanic.
He competed in the National Bus Mechanic for being the most efficient and doing that and he won that award, he won the national award. And this guy, Jamie Webb, is a volunteer fireman from the Ridgeaway Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
And, and I also want to congratulate Jenkinsville too for the, for the best tasting water.
Mr. Paul?
I want to say thank you for everyone here tonight. I appreciate your numerous emails and phone calls. We as a council have an obligation to every citizen in Fairfield County that we are doing our due diligence and making the best possible decisions that we can make. The residents of Center Creek and surrounding areas have expressed their disapproval in a wastewater treatment facility being built next door to their properties. I think we owe it to them to find a better suited location.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Vice Chair Golems?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I live in Jenkinsville on the western side. I've been using Jenkinsville Water Service since it was started. One of the first person, well, a part of the first person that started. We've had many, many problems with the system, the system is old and broken. That award, there is no way, nowhere, that the Rural Water Association tests water for anyone, anybody, any county, any town. That's not what they do, they're just a rural water association. The award that was given is something that is given when you go to a company meeting and they do some little things and then they award you, it has nothing to do with that. And the taste, if you put a gallon of water on a table and you can get 10 people and everybody will say it tastes different, but it has nothing to do with contamination. You cannot taste E. coli, you cannot taste salmonella, you cannot taste bacteria, you cannot taste any of those things. So taste and contamination in a bad system is nothing. It went out and to have our elected officials boast and knowing that we have a problem with the system and had this problem for years and knowing it needs to be rebuilt, we have now in place and we're working hard, the chairman and administrator, and it hasn't just started, to try to get a regional water service that will supply the entire county, not just one area. And it's been worked, they've been working on it for years. But to have legislators that would do such a thing and deceive the community as if it was a great thing, we got an award, there's no such award. Nobody can test water and say it's the best quality water out of all the counties. Well, your water come from depends on your treatment, on the area you live in, a lot of factors go into how water tastes. And all you got to do is research it. That's all you got to do is research and more than that, just taste your water and go up the road to somebody else's house and taste their water and it will taste different. So that's not a big deal. But the big deal is, we have a bad water system that needs to be changed. And we have an opportunity now more than ever to do that with the regional water in the system. I applaud the town of Windsboro and the county for coming together and working so diligently to strive for that purpose, to better the community and quality of life. So taste and contamination are as far as the east is from the west. Thank you.
Thank you.
So are we going, the county, the regional water authority, are we going to try to take over the water company?
Take over Jenkinsville?
Yeah.
That's not currently under, we're not looking to take over, a hostile takeover of anyone.
No, no, it's not.
Well, no, you, you're just saying I'm just piggybacking on that.
I'm talking about a regional water system that can help the residents on the western side. We do not have a decent store over there and we can't get it without having the good water pressure, a better system. We don't have, people need a laundry mat, we, just simple amenities that we need. We don't have a store that you can go and buy fresh vegetables or anything. We've never had a great, good family side, family type restaurant, just simple amenities for the community. I'm not talking, we talk about merry-go-rounds and we talk about basketball courts, but the, the quality of life amenities. And we're, we're going into a millennial generation, you know, we've got to change the mindset of what was and where we can go. When opportunities occur, it should be push all personalities aside, all personal stuff aside, and let's get in there and do what's best for the county and for the citizens of the county. Nobody's taking, we can't take over, we don't own anything. The best we can do on our best day is work together to grow together. That's it.
So, Ms. Gorman, you, you mentioned E. coli and bacteria, so are you implying that that's in the water at Jenkinsville?
Um, no. If it's not, then sue DHEC because they did, they brought the violations against the company. Go to DHEC, don't take my word for it, I don't test water either.
they went over, when they went over their financial statements with all the funds they have in the bank. So that, that opens the eyes.
Mr. Trapp, I, I guess I'm, I'm on the joint water authority, and there is no talk of...
Okay, well, I'm just, it keep being mentioned up here, so I want to make sure.
There, there is, there is no, there is no talk of takeover right now.
Where it's been mentioned up here several times. So, like I said, seems like the finances are in, are pretty strong, so, so I can see if someone want to try to take it over.
Well, I, I can say, I, I can say to council members, no, no discussion from the joint water authority has even mentioned Jenkinsville.
Okay.
And on another note, I'd just like to thank everyone for coming, especially the citizens from Cedar Creek as well, and I'd like to thank Thomas for that presentation. It definitely enlightened me a little more. I'm new on the water and sewer thing myself, so thank you for that presentation. If nothing else, entertain...
More in executive session.
Yeah, entertain a motion to go into executive session. Second, I'm sorry, let's back up. We, we going into executive session for, A, a contractual matter, receipt of legal advice regarding amendments to a lease agreement providing for a new county administration building to better serve the citizens of Fairfield County, do I have a motion?
Well, open, chair. Are we going to vote on the wastewater?
Yes, sir. We just going to do that after executive session, just to keep it flowing. But we're not going to discuss the, in executive session.
But couldn't we do that before we go back? So we won't hold the residents up?
I can promise you, this won't be but 10 minutes. I can promise you. So to have a motion, we won't be but 10 minutes, guys. I, I promise you on that.
Again, I make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded in executive session. All those in favor? Any opposed? If we're in executive session, let's go downstairs to the Sheriff's Department also. All right, I'll take a motion to exit executive session.
I make a motion to executive session.
Enter it back. Motion been made to exit executive session, enter back into regular session. All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? We are now back into regular session. I think we have two to go back over. One will be, hold on. Yeah. The item D, third and final reading, ordinance number 738. I think we have a motion from Mr. Paul.
I would like to make a motion to table the third reading of ordinance 738 until the next meeting of county council, in order to give staff more time to explore other locations.
All right. Mr. Paul has made a motion to table third and final reading, ordinance number 738, and seconded by Mr. Bell. All those in favor of tabling it, signify by raising your hand? All those against tabling it? All right, nays have it. All right, now down to third and final reading, ordinance number 738.
So explain that vote, Mr. Chairman, for the audience.
Oh, Mr.?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of council, what just took place was that there was a motion to table, to lay on the table, the ordinance number 738, to not have a vote at this meeting. That motion failed on a vote of three to four. Therefore, if someone makes a motion for third and final reading of ordinance number 738, it could go forward for an up or down vote.
Okay. Now down to, back to item D, third and final reading, ordinance number 738, and ordinance authorizing Fairfield County to purchase real property containing at least 50 acres and not costing more than $300,000. That meets the necessary requirements for said property to be used as a suitable location for a wastewater treatment site, or other uses deemed fit by Fairfield County Council and other related matters. Do I have a motion?
No move.
It's been moved and properly seconded and discussion. I'll just say, this authorizes him to make a purchase if seen fit, but county is exploring other options. I'll just say that. So, any further discussion? If not, all... Put, put it in your microphone, Mr. Bell. You trying to make Ms. Davis's job, or...
Okay. One of the things that the citizen came before us tonight, and, and if you look at the number of citizens that came, and one of the things I did, and I guess, is the people over there on Airport Road is talking about the incinerator, is really not fair to, to have people build homes and have communities, and then all of a sudden, we do things to, to almost destroy their communities. And so with that, I'm really not in favor of it.
Destroy the community? After that presentation?
Maybe, maybe that word is, is too strong, okay? However, instead of saying destroy, I mean, it bring damage to the community.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye, raising your right hand? All those opposed? Eyes have it, four to three. Now down to, where are we at? Ordinance 740, second reading, ordinance number 740, and ordinance authorizing amendments to lease agreement, providing for a new county administration building to better serve the citizens of Fairfield County and other related matters. Do I have a motion?
No move.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? If we could just get a brief, either Mr. Taylor or Mr. Morgan, give a brief description for citizen purposes, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of council, what you have before you tonight is an, an ordinance which would allow for the amendment to the lease that Fairfield County has previously entered into regarding the new administration building. This lease is going to be amended due to some impacts that financing has on the project. Actually, there are very favorable impacts, is my understanding, that this is allowing for First Domain, the developers of the administration building, to get more favorable financing. So there's been some changes to the lease terms. As for the initial lease rental amount, and also, there's been some other non-material changes that, that have been made regarding, basically terms that only the financiers would need in case there was a renewal period. And finally, would add, as previously indicated, the teachage. It would increase the size of the development from approximately 45,000 to about 51,000 square feet.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah. By adding the teachage, the project going to cost us about $324,000 more dollars. Okay. One of the things, one of the things that happened, I think it's about two or three weeks ago, I came up here, and, and Mr. Taylor showed me the, how the, the building itself is, is leaking, it's got mold, it's got, just like tonight, we don't have heat. So there's a real need to make sure we get to another building.
Don't forget, I stopped it from burning down twice.
Yeah. And so, Mr. Robinson stopped it from burning down twice. However, I think we made a, sort of a grave mistake here, because there are, there are other developers build new buildings, okay, with the same type financing we have. We've seen it in other counties. And I just think, by the time we get this building, in three to five years, we, this building would be out of date, and I think it's a bad mistake. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Bell. Any further comments?